Welcome, everyone. Today is January 19th and it is 6:30 PM. This is the Acushnet Planning Board. This meeting is being recorded for the YouTube channel and also on live via Zoom. Can I get a motion to open the planning board meeting?
Motion to open the meeting.
May I get a second?
A second, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh, I'd like... Yeah, I'm gonna have everybody introduce themselves. We don't need a roll call for introduction. Can you introduce ourselves? Pat, why don't you start the introduction? Paul, start the introduction, please.
Paul Sullivan, Assistant with the Planning Department.
Steve Boucher, member.
Mark Francois, Chairman.
Ryan DeChamps, member.
Rick Ellis, Vice Chairman.
And we have...
Dave, Dave Ringman.
We have a member on Zoom. I'd also like to announce that I have asked Jamie Kelly to attend tonight's meeting. We also have the Building Commissioner, Andy Babola, the Conservation Agent, Pat Hanon, and Town Council, Jeffrey Blake, also on Zoom tonight to kind of fill us in on some of the latest and greatest of 550 Main Street. Before we get to that, I'd like to just get something out of the way real quick. The minutes, have we all had a chance to look over the minutes of the December 8th meeting?
Yes.
Yes, I have.
They're all emailed to us. Anybody have any issues, discussions?
Nope. Not myself. Make a motion to approve the minutes from December 8th or so. Or...
Second.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Fabulous. Paul, is that one here for me to sign? Or is that...
Yeah.
Is it the one again?
We can sign it up.
Sign it at the end, alright.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
A point of order, I think you have to do a roll call because they'll join in by Zoom even though I don't think I was at that meeting and can't vote.
Even though, alright, you're still gonna do a roll call even though you're not voting?
I don't know, I'm not sure. I'm just saying everything you do tonight should be a roll call vote, that's all.
So, Mr. Chairman, he is correct. If we're doing a hybrid, you have to do a roll call vote because any recording would have to know who was there and who was voting. So, all the votes that you take tonight should be roll call.
Okay, okay, thank you very much. For the record, roll call vote.
Steve Boucher, member.
Mark Francois, member. Ryan DeChamps, member.
Rick Ellis, Vice Chairman.
And, oh, what's his name? No, that was wrong.
Dave Couldn't.
Dave Couldn't.
Because he wasn't at the meeting.
He wasn't at the meeting. Okay, alright.
I'm gonna have to stand, yes, thank you.
Okay, uh, that's been taken care of. Let's see. Next, on the agenda, there are no public hearings tonight. Discussions on other topics. This is a review of the solar permit of 550 Main Street to discuss activities since the last planning board meeting related to the motion to have the building inspector to review the special permit for violations. For the record, I'm gonna read the letter, the memorandum that was sent to Andy Babola. The Acushnet Planning Commission held a meeting on Thursday evening, December 22nd, 2022. The board made a motion to have the Building Commissioner slash enforcement officer to make a determination if the proponent is in violation of the special permit approved on December 13th, 2018. The board believes that the proponent is in violation of the special permit, conditions 16, 17, 18, and 21. If the Building Commissioner slash enforcement officer makes a determination that those conditions were violated, the Planning Commission asks that a cease and desist order be issued to stop any further construction of the project. Also, if the Planning Commission asks that the Plan... The Planning Commission asks the Building Commissioner and Enforcement Officer to make a determination if the proponent needs to come back to the Planning Commission for possible revisions or amendments to the special permit. We sent that to the Andy Babola on December 22nd... Oh, 27th, excuse me. And on January 9th, Andy Babola sent a letter to Navasun. I'm not gonna read the entire thing, but I'm gonna read the first paragraph. Dear Navasun, U.S. Development LLC, It has been brought to my attention and confirmed after an inspection of the above referenced property that Project Acushnet Mass 2 is currently in violation of special permit issued by the town of Solar Array located on 550 Main Street. Specifically after inspection, I have determined that you are in violation of conditions 15, 16, 17, 18, 20, and 21. And then he goes on to talk about all the different conditions. And then at the end, basically, I hereby order a cease and desist of any further construction at the property. I also wanted to bring up to the board that prior to January 9th of Andy Babola sending this letter and after January 9th, there have been multiple department head meetings between Andy, Pat Conservation, myself, and Paul, Jamie Kelly. We've all gone together multiple times to discuss Navasun and 550 Main Street. I just wanted, for the record, that all departments are working very closely to get this resolved. But, like you had mentioned earlier, it's not up to us to resolve it, it's up to the proponent to present a set of plans and that's gonna fix the issues. With that being said, does anybody from the board have any questions for myself or anybody on Zoom?
Well, I guess one of the things that David brought up at the last meeting that he was at is... I think one of the things that we need to do is establish exactly what was approved by the planning board. A set of signed plans approved by us and the original order of... or the original conditions signed by us. And that's a place to start from. At that point, I think we have to ask Navasun to come up with a set of plans that reflects what they're building today. When we have those two things in front of us, we can decide, along with the building inspector, whether they are... whether they need to come back to us and get a revision to the original special permit or not. And I think that's an important thing. Along with that, obviously, in terms of construction erosion control, whatever they've done out there has not been adequate to take care of it. You know, there's the conservation, there's Pat. I think they need to present to the townspeople or the town boards, all of them, what they are going to propose to take care of the short-term erosion control problem, which is going to continue on through the springtime. Because there's no way to plant anything to stabilize anything. I think that's another thing I'd like to see addressed. The... you know, we had some plans that were drawn up by a registered engineer that we had peer reviewed that showed a drainage scheme. Whether it was built the way it was supposed to or not, it's clearly... whatever they've done is clearly not functioning. And the health and welfare of the surrounding community has not been protected. I mean, that's the reason the Pats have been involved and that's the reason the building inspector sent the letter. I think the final drainage of this project needs... and the temporary drainage of this project needs to have a concise, complete proposal by them. And we need to have some assurance that it's actually going to work this time. Because what they've done and what's been proposed is not working.
No.
So, I... and I think it's up to Navasun to come up with that, to show... to show the board, the Planning Commission, to show Pat Kimmitt, to show the building inspector, to show the town administrator, so that going forward, we don't have to talk about these issues anymore. That's... that's about my two cents at this point. I honestly... We've had a number of systems, drainage systems in town that have relied on infiltration to keep the basins or drainage system dry until the rainfall events happen. I believe that the calculations for performance of this system are based on the basins being dry before the rain event happens. I need to have that... I think that that should be reviewed by yet another consultant. And we need proof that these things are gonna work when the rainfall events happen. And we don't have to have... the town, obviously, there's no one to be in a position of trying to get tankers out there to keep these basins low. I am concerned... I don't see a way to make the system work the way it's been designed. I guess that's where I'm headed.
In my opinion, it should never have started in November. That was the first and biggest mistake. It should never have been started. They couldn't hydrocure, they can't, you know, they can't mitigate the runoff.
To open up the entire side of a hill and not make provisions for temporary erosion control to contain it on the site is... I'm gonna pick the right word here. I would say that that's ludicrous. I would also say that I am disappointed that an organization that's dealt with construction as much as Navasun has, has put themselves and the town in that situation. I don't understand why they did that. I really don't. And honestly, I think there's some negligence involved there to open up the side of a hill and not put in the proper measures for temporary erosion control until the site is finally stabilized. Especially if they're gonna open it up in December.
Yeah.
Worst possible time. I'll show them.
Dave, out in Zoom, do you have anything you need to ask or add?
I agree with Rick 100%. That's all I have to add right now. Thank you.
Okay. I... oh, Mr. Kelly, please.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, could you please state whether the applicant was invited to this meeting and was contacted so to make sure that they had an opportunity to be here and had an opportunity to comment?
As far as inviting the applicant, Mr. Blake, I'm gonna reach out to you. Did you discuss with anybody that there was a meeting here tonight?
I did not.
And I think that, honestly, I think that's fine because we're here to discuss the situation and try to get a way to go forward. And I... before we get at the tail end of this discussion, I would make a motion that we request representatives from Navasun to come to our... come to a meeting and explain to us what they intend to do to correct the situation.
Well, to be completely honest with you, I was under the assumption that they would have been here. I watched the ConCon meeting that they had last week. They had made mention that they would be here. That's why I asked everybody else to be here because I was under the assumption that they would be here. Then again, they haven't presented us with anything new to discuss. And I've also made mention to them that if, when they do propose new information, that it should be a public meeting and...
Absolutely.
And everybody should be, you know, involved in the public hearing, in the public meeting for questions and answers. So, nobody is here tonight representing Navasun. So, as far as I'm concerned, if nobody else has any questions...
And one other thing, and this is for Pat?
Yeah, Pat wants to talk, yeah.
If... are you gonna be... would you be available tomorrow around 9 o'clock to walk the site with me? Or any other members of the board that want to do that? I would love to see how that site is performing after this little bit of rain that we've had.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so the site has been wet to optimum risk. It's totally separated. They've been pumping from the two basins, upgrading and letting the water attend rates back down voting for infiltration. We reached maximum infiltration. I suggested getting ready this back, taking stuff off to a treatment mass in a defec truck. And they may be headed that way, but something about the meeting... Mike did say at the official meeting that they were aware of this meeting and it would be attended. And the meeting's focused, you know, it's a focused meeting. It's not a surprise. We've never invited, you know, other people to our meetings, so I don't know that that's a big deal. But, I just want to remember for all of the planning board members, that if I issued my enforcement order on December 9th, possibly, telling them to come in on January 11th and file a notice of intent and a corrective action design, that they refused to do it. And they showed up at our meeting last Wednesday and they refused to file notice of intent and they refused to file a corrective action design. She's operating off at the Earl of Navasun. Steve Campbell informed Mike Chairman that the site was absolutely stabilized and resolved that. They've done everything they need to do. And two days later on Friday, I would get called to work for another emergency at 550 Main Street. And that basin burning, if it could fail, and we wanted to pump water, so I went out and if we pumped the water up. Then, I asked them, probably a few months ago, for a construction period stormwater prevention plan, something I learned about groups that we've had heard of by CPA and carers on the sites like this. And the other part of this is the basins were never intended to discharge until the project was stabilized, Rick. The basin was supposed to serve as a sedimentation basin and Navasun failed to inspect it and didn't the contractor actually installed the other pipes. And the reason that the discharge happened is the presence. They allowed it. They put the pipe in. And the plans clearly say it's a sedimentation basin during a construction period. So, it's been a big failure by them to oversee their own job. And now, today, we've got a court near the center that they're asking for a body to let us file a notice of intent. They threatened me to approve a whole bunch of things. My feeling is they were throwing dust. Like you said, I wanted a standard plan for that for the commission, go through PA review for the stormwater review, and, you know, down to the surface. So, that's where it is.
I'd still like to take a look at this site while or just after it's raining.
As long as, as long as it's not snowing, you know, and if I went to the bottle of snow at my house, I'll be more than glad to meet you tomorrow. But I would suggest that we go through the backyard of 582, waiting up for the hours with access place on the top of the basin. And you can look right over there. Otherwise, you're gonna walk into deep too much.
I have boots, Pat. I have boots and rain gear.
I have anything I wanna do. Don't cut the rip.
Where would... at what location would you like to meet? To begin the meeting?
Why don't we just meet at Town Hall? How far away do we go?
Meet at Town Hall.
Okay.
No.
Okay, I'll... I will get... I will get up here for 9 o'clock, okay?
Does anybody else want to go?
I'll go. If I can be there, I'm gonna be there.
Okay, well, 9 o'clock at Town Hall. Whoever wants to show up.
I don't know how many of us can be at the same place at the same time, so you two can go.
Other than that, it's gotta be a posted meeting. I mean, so the two, you can go.
Mr. Chairman, you're right, only two can go. It can't be a quorum. And secondly, if you're going to go on the property and inspect, we really should notify the applicant. I strongly recommend we don't just walk on the property.
Well, I... the property every day, Jack.
I'm sorry?
I have access to the property every day. I know that every day is a progress for those.
Well, if they give you permission, then great, but I would rather not just... I would advise you guys not to just walk on.
Well, I mean, I... that's why actually I requested that we do it with Pat. Because Pat has got the authority to walk on the property to see what erosion control measures are in place and how they are operating. Am I correct with that, Pat?
Actually, Rick, they do not have the notice of intent. They never went through confirmation for this job. That's the other part of this.
I mean, if I have... if I have to go there and ask permission from the landowner to go on his property, I mean, I will gladly do that.
I... the town already got permission from Mr. Westgate. What else does it have? Now that you mention that.
I do feel...
There's no issues. And quite frankly, Navasun has told me not to go on the site.
They've told you not to go on the site?
No, they've never told me.
Have not.
Okay. I mean, I feel more comfortable walking on the site than I do, you know, walking on others' properties at this point.
And I'm the stormwater agent, so I'm gonna bring people with me. They do have a stormwater permit and it does give us access to the site.
Okay.
My advice stands. It should go along with progression. If you got permission, then you got permission.
I'll send them an email tonight telling them that the members of the Planning Commission want to go and we're gonna be there at 9 o'clock if you want to have any questions. If you have one, yeah, alright.
Okay. Okay, fair enough. Now, while Town Council is here, I mean... At this point, I've got... I'm assuming that what they are proposing to build is the same thing as they've got a special permit for. If it is different, then the way I understand it is the Building Commissioner has the authority to determine whether it's within the purview of the original special permit or not. If the planning board feels otherwise, then would the proper method be for us to send a letter to the Building Commissioner that we feel that their proposed work is not in line with their original special permit and then go from there?
Yeah, I mean, if you have a conflict between the two of you, I mean, one would help.
I mean, the thing is, we tried to intervene on one other site and we were told we didn't have any authority. I have no... I have no qualms with any of the town officers or the members that are in charge of enforcing things there. But if we're... if the planning board's gonna be involved, then we need some kind of route to get our take on the whole situation to the Building Commissioner, to Pat, and to Navasun. And if we have to recommend to the Building Commissioner that they... we don't feel that their proposed work, whatever it is, I have no idea at this point, is not in compliance, and to ask him to continue to hold the cease and desist. The other side of that is, I want them to do whatever work is necessary so that the people downstream don't get inundated with water and silt. So, I mean, that's the other side of the coin. I mean, I do want things to be done out there, but, you know, it can't just be whatever they decide to do.
There's a process. And you, the planning board, can certainly voice your concerns through a letter. Ask Mr. Babola to come before you and say, "We believe that a special permit required X, Y, and Z. We don't believe that they're due." Mr. Babola, your Building Commissioner, can go out and take a look, but it is his, in the first instance, to make that determination. If he says, "You know what, I think they're fine." And you have an issue with that. It's an interesting situation that's set up. Any appeal of the determination would go to zoning board of appeal. So, I suppose you might be able to appeal Mr. Babola's determination, we'd wanna do it in writing, to the zoning board of appeal. You would go to the zoning board of appeal and you would make your case. It's a bit of a strange court with these solar projects because I can tell you right now, the bylaw that you had is not any different than most. You're the special permit granting authority under the zoning bylaw. You issue a special permit and that's it. You guys sign off on the permit, you're done. It then is handed over to your zoning enforcement officer who takes this special permit, goes out, does inspections, and says, "Yeah, that's fine." Or, "No, that's not fine." And if you disagree with that, you would appeal to the zoning board of appeal. Or, if you said it's not fine, the... I'm a student, go there. The one, and I don't wanna call it a flying award, but the one detour from that would be if there is a major modification of the special permit which would require it to come back to the planning board. And I believe that it would be your zoning enforcement officer in the first instance, who would make that determination and say, "This is a major modification. You... you put it hold up. You gotta go back to the planning board." Then it would come back to you.
Okay, I understand. I mean, my only thing at this point is I just want to do whatever I can do to support Pat and Andy so that they can get the things out of Navasun that are necessary to protect the people surrounding the project. That's all. I'm not... I don't wanna create an adversarial situation at all, quite the contrary. I just wanna help them get what they need from Navasun.
Yeah, I understand 100%. And, you know, we just talked about the theory, okay? How it works. But about 99.9% of the time, the zoning enforcement officer and the planning board and the zoning board of appeals are all on the same page. So, whoever initiates DA action, which it is the zoning enforcement officer, typically, everybody's on the same page. I think the big issue here will be whether or not what they need to do is a major modification to the special permit or if it's so minor that the building inspector can handle. That's gonna be the... that's gonna be energy. With respect to all the other enforcement, as you can see, your zoning enforcement officer has already issued a cease and desist. He's on top of that. And your stormwater agent has also issued a cease and desist. He's on top of that. So, you know, our hope is that they are going to see this. They're gonna sit back, they're gonna figure out how to make it work. And if that make it work requires them to modify the special permit, that's when your zoning enforcement officer will say, "That's a major modification. I want you to go back before the planning board." That's probably what's gonna happen. And I think you're all on the same page.
Okay, fair enough. Well, with that, I got one question. Actually, it's probably directed over to Mr. Babola or Town Council. When it comes to issuing a permit, okay? We have a special permit here with a date on it, okay? Say hypothetically, the permit was to expire February 1st, 2023. And what is the late date for applying for a permit? And will it get extended? Because I know by Mass General... Mass Building Code, they... basically, the building department has 30 days to approve a permit or disapprove of a permit, to respond to a permit. And if I were to say, "It's gonna expire. I'm the proponent, I come in, and today I walk in." You know, what do we got there? 13 days left to the end of the month? Is that acceptable for the special permit? Does it fall in line with that?
Well, the special permit, the... Well, the, the special permit, the, 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 the limitation, the, the expiration is, you gotta stop, and it's one, I understand, they've already started work, so they're, they've already started the special permit, so there's, I don't believe that there's any expiration issue with that.
No, well, I get, the, the que, the question is, is the, the late date for filing for the permit, okay? Do, I mean, can they walk in, basically, if it's on January thirty-first, and apply for the permit, and the special permit is still, is still good?
Apply for the building permit.
Yeah, the building permit, not the special permit, the building permit. My, my understanding of the process now is that they've, they've activated the special permit, they have to show that they are working continuously to completion in order to keep that permit valid. If they, if they stop work, I, they can't stop work indefinitely and still have that special permit valid, as far as I know. Is, is that correct?
That, that very well may be, but the, the timeframes that we're talking about here, you know, I, I've had cases where people have stopped work, or it appeared that they stopped work for years, and they have made the argument that we put a shovel in the ground, and then we got financing, and then we got this, and then we got that. So the, the fact that they cut trees pursuant to your special permit means that they, they have started to exercise that permit. And, you know, at some point, I agree, it's gonna become an analysis of, you started it, but you didn't, you, you, you've abandoned it, I guess is gonna be the terminology, but we're talking a pretty far away down the road, and it can't be because our zoning enforcement officer told them to stop for a reason. You know, it would have to be a voluntary, it is doing, or you issued the permit, and they did nothing, and I mean nothing, they didn't get financing, they didn't do anything. They got the permit, and they walked away and said, okay, great, we got a permit. Two years later, they haven't exercised it in any way, shape, or form, they're out. Well, it's an expiration.
Okay, fair enough.
Okay, well, I guess that kinda concludes the whole Navasun discussion.
How about the size of this thing now? When does that discussion come up to, what, what's the sizes, and why did we have to clear that much land?
That is part of the cease and desist between fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and twenty-one, that the building commissioner put a cease and desist on. So we need to find out, before they, this cease and desist is lifted, what the size is. I brought this up to them the last meeting, that I have a letter here from field engineering dated back August the twenty-one, that says that Eversource isn't gonna accept the two megawatt field, they're only gonna accept the one megawatt, that's why they wanted to bring the, the sureties down from eighty-seven thousand dollars down to fifty-four thousand dollars, and somehow it ended up at like sixty-two thousand dollars.
They still cleared the amount of land they needed to do the large one.
It seems so.
It seems so, yes. So I'm, I'm, before this, before this cease and desist that the building inspector put on is lifted, I want those answers. That's, that's one of the things that, out of all of this, outside of the, the water running down the hill, besides that, this is, that's one of the biggest issues that I personally have.
I see that too, it's a huge issue.
Why did they clear a two-megawatt field when they're only approved for a one-megawatt? So I, I, we definitely want the answers to that before the building inspector's cease and desist is lifted.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
I, I would, I would make a motion at this point, and we can discuss it, that we request that Navasun show up at our next scheduled meeting with a set of plans that show what they are proposing to build there. I would also request, or also make as part of that motion, that we see the calculations that were put together to determine what that two-megawatt proposal was. They also come in with calculations that show what the megawatt proposal is for what they are proposing to construct. And, and the reason, the reason I say that, Jamie, is, you know, the original permit was, was done in two thousand and eighteen. There, I'm sure there have been advances in panel technology, they may, they may be getting two megawatts from the panels that they're proposing to build right now.
Can you, this might be a question for Town Council, but can you demand a set of plans if they haven't come to you to apply for a change of this original special permit?
We can certainly ask them, and if they decide not to show up, you know, I think we have to treat the, the witnesses hostile.
Correct, let me get, let me get to the punch. It was, you go through the paperwork, it was determined by the previous building commissioner that the changes of reduction from a two-megawatt down to a one-megawatt was a minor change, and he issued the permit accordingly, and it did not come into force. So that's, that's, that's kind of, that's everything that I've written, that's, that's just, that's the short version of it, and there's several correspondence saying that, that's there, and nothing, it wasn't, it was, the building permit was executed as a one-megawatt, when you look at the building permit settings, I'm not, I'm almost positive about this, and Mr. Bobola can correct me if I'm wrong, was, was issued as a one-megawatt, okay, change, but it did not have to come back in front of us, but it was only the reduction in the size of the, the production of the panels.
Absolutely, the way, the way I understood that at the time, and I'm, I can't speak for the previous building inspector, but they would have been the same panels with the same panel output, and the reason that the, the board went away, went with a reduction in surety is that the assumption was that there would be half as many panels and half as much clearing and half as much restoration to do.
What happens when you assume?
I, I, I understand, but that, I'm, I will call that the basis of determining that the one-megawatt was a, was a minor change. The, not the assumption, but the, the, the way it was presented was that there would be half as many panels, half as much clearing, so there wasn't as much money needed, and that's supported by the fact that there wasn't as much needed to tear the project down afterwards, and there wasn't as much clearing that was going to be done.
Mr. Bobola, would you like to add anything? I see you had your hand up.
There were a few things, Mr. Chairman and board members, I just want to assure you that there are, obviously, there are numerous things that are not correct, not pointing fingers at anyone, but my job, and part of my job, is to make sure that we get this, try to collectively get this back on track. This is going to need extensive conservation approval, as Pat has mentioned, this is, this project right now is so far off base, I don't know what it's gonna take to get it back on base. The way I look at it, and, and collectively over my career, is you guys collectively as board members, and conservation, and everyone, has looked at this project, gone through numerous meetings, had one set of plans that was approved, and all of a sudden, you know, months, years later, we have a project that doesn't even resemble what was approved. And then you factor in, one board has one set of plans, another board or commission has another set of plans, building department has a third set of plans, none of them match. And I can assure you, and alls I can do is tell you and give you my word, that before a cease and desist order will be removed or rescinded, it will not be done without conservation, health, planning, everyone, to make sure that we're back on track. Now, what it's gonna take to get from point A to point B is gonna be a monumental effort on their part. It's not gonna be an easy task, and we have spent collectively a ton of man-hours trying to figure out what has gone wrong. And you can talk to Pat for a half hour, and he'll tell you, you can talk to me for a half hour, and I'm gonna tell you, and we put them all together, and this plan doesn't resemble what they've done. And they just need to, you know, they've gotta come clean, they never should have started this the way it has been started, and the results have been shown, you know, you look at that major swell, you look at the problems, you know, the high one, I'll give, the first thing I looked at was this retention farm that's in the middle of a hydraulic lake between the two properties, and, you know, and Pat verified it, it's like, that's a major, major problem, it's no wonder that none of this is working. So they've got a lot of explaining to do, they've got a lot of plans necessary to bring this back and, and to a point where any of us will accept it.
Okay, and that said, then, I'll withdraw my motion, okay, because I just, but I just would add that if there is anything that you need from the planning board to get this project on track and moving forward, just let us know, and, and I for one would be glad to assist in any way that I can.
Thank you, sir.
Dave, you have chimed in, you got something to say?
Yes, I actually changed what I was going to say based upon what I've just heard. I find it very refreshing that this board is having a meeting with the building inspector, and, and our town administrator, and town council, and actually working as a team to try and resolve something that is, you know, a pretty significant project, especially for the downgrading neighbors, and I feel very good about what Mr. Bobola expressed to us. Unlike the past, I really had no surety that, you know, that we're ever gonna be involved in decisions of, of that nature, you know, relative to solar farms, once they're approved, it almost seemed like, you know, we're invisible after that, we don't matter, you know, so I think this will resolve itself over due time, because they need to move forward, they need to address the stormwater, they have to submit something to, to stormwater, you know, they, they can go to court over the enforcement action, but it's gonna take them so long, it's not gonna accomplish what they really need to accomplish, so, you know, which is, they want to have that thing up as soon as possible, I'm sure, before the sun shines heavy and high in May, so I think this will all resolve ourselves, I think this is a fantastic joint meeting just to get on the same page, and, you know, let's see where it goes. Thanks.
I agree with you one hundred percent.
Pat? I got an email from Steve Campbell, no wish of going on the site, Mark, but we're all set.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
I think that's gonna conclude our discussion regarding five fifty Main Street and Navasun. We're gonna continue with tonight's meeting, everybody out in Zoom, you're welcome to stay or not. Thank you for, thank you for attending and all your advice.
Mr. Chairman, you, you know, as much as I'd love to stay, do you, you know, it costs you money, do you need me to stay?
No, no, just like I, the opposite happened that I thought was gonna happen, nobody from Navasun showed up, so I think we had a really good, healthy discussion tonight, and, and I think we're, we're good for now, and, yeah, we, we can, we can go.
Have a great weekend, everybody.
Okay, thank you.
You too, Joe.
No, everybody, Andy, Pat, you guys, you're welcome to stay, but not necessary.
Okay, thank you.
Next, I know, Mr. Kelly, you have another meeting with ten.
No, he's up.
Yeah, he's up now. Jamie Kelly, Town Administrator, discussion on future town planner role. Paul had sent out an email a few weeks back with some descriptions of what other towns have put in for their town planner. I asked Mr. Kelly to come in and kinda discuss and have a question and answer situation with the board regarding the new town planner, which we really need to resolve and get this moving in the right direction quickly. Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna take
A techno logical reading.
A tech recess, we'll be back in a few minutes, we're back. Dave, can you hear us?
Yep, we're back. I can see us on the.
Yeah, Dave, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you, I've heard you the whole time.
Oh, okay, all right, all right. We're gonna have, we're not gonna have visual, or we might not have visual for a little bit, but here we go.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, my name is Jamie Kelly, I'm the town administrator, just to identify myself. As was said during the previous discussion, staff has spent quite a bit of man-hours dealing with various subjects that are under your purview, and dealing with your staff, dealing with your files, and you yourself have been in some of those discussions. It's not typical. Part of the reason for that is that you are without a professional town planner, and that is a very obvious cause of some of the problems that we're discovering. Other problems, I won't go into discussing the reasons for, I just wanna identify them. When we were started to look into the operation of the planning department, and how it relates to other permit-granting authorities and departments, and the inspectional departments, we found that there are a great deal of operational inefficiencies. There was ineffective coordination, and what I call departmental isolation, other people call silos. There was delay in processing and decision-making, there was inaccurate documentation, there was inefficient use of staff, in my mind, it was a waste of resources, it included duplication of outfits and a waste of time. I also have been fielding a number of complaints through my brief tenure here as town administrator, and that shows me that there's some deficiency in customer service. And we talked about the vacancies and professional staffing, we are also looking into the legal costs, because I think they're beyond where they should be. Now, that's just a general overview of what caused me to go beyond just looking at how to fill the town planner position. Very specific issues that we've discovered. There were issuance, issuance of permits without documented board or committee review. There were deficient records and unrecorded actions. There was a discrepancy in plans filed department to department. Each department had different plans, and I'm not talking about minor changes, I'm talking about major changes. From two detention basins to one, from two detention basins to none, and this is not for one project. There are unsigned plans that are supposedly There are unsigned plans that are supposedly the official plans. Fees have been waived without a specific statement defining that it was in the town's interests to do the waiver. Insufficient surety and inadequate escalator provisions are in place. There are missing as-built plans. There are undocumented or unrecorded board or committee actions. The software involved with the inspections and permitting had safeguards disabled so that, in effect, you're supposed to have a flow chart that it goes from one step to the next step to the next step in permitting and review. If step A is not accomplished, you're not supposed to be able to get to step B. That safeguard was disabled. There was lack of proper notice when reputation or character was discussed. There was insufficient documentation of inspections. And there was non-adherence to proper decorum and customer service. I am not saying it was just projects that come before you. This is across the board. There's a problem that must be resolved. And I'm coming to you folks to, because the Board of Selectmen said I should come to you first, go to the other committees or commissions involved, boards involved, discuss it and collaboratively come up with a solution. The, looking at the vacancy of the planner position caused me to go in and start asking questions and that just opened this all up. And part of it is that's what I've done in the past in other places, in other positions, in other careers. As far as solutions, I've looked at the, performed an operational analysis. I think we have to define purpose and mandated functions. A lot of it has already been defined. A lot of it's been defined by the general laws and your own regulations and procedures. Uh, we have to evaluate employee skill sets to make sure the right person is in the right place. That means we have to review the organizational structure. Because I don't think the structure you have now with the various silos and the offices being not communicative in the past or cooperative is working. We have to make sure that any identified roadblocks and silos are eliminated. We have to have a staff that works together seamlessly between all boards and committees involved in this type of endeavor. And, uh, we have to verify that legal and regulatory compliance happened. Part of that is you're reaping right now some of these deficiencies in what you're seeing in the project you just discussed. I'm going to ask that we start to discuss cross-functional solutions, whether you centralize customer service and parting ways building in one customer service, uh, area. And have all of the boards' various applications, et cetera, in one area so that the customers can go to that particular area, have staff trained that when they come in and they say, "We're going to need to do X project," the staff can say, and this is the support staff, "You need to go to the planning board first, here are the applications for that, here's what you need to present with those applications. You are then going to need to go to the conservation commission, here's those applications, here's what they're going to need, and here's what they might need from the planning board, and here's what they might need de novo." And then it's going to go potentially to the Board of Health, and here's what you need for that. And instead of having people come in and go to you and then go, um, three months later to the conservation commission and have the conservation commission say, "Oh no, you've got to go back and here's what you need to do." Let's make this a one-stop shopping where we can have the people come in, they know what's expected of them, to be able to have every single board do their due diligence, do what they're supposed to do, and then get through to the finish of the project and have the building permits issued. We're going to be looking at updating permitting software because I don't know how the safeguards were eliminated in the software you have. But we're going to look into that and if need be, we'll, uh, make sure that it doesn't happen again. And I'm looking to centralize the departmental management and administration. That does not mean that the inspectors will not be answering to the appropriate boards. That means that we'll have one individual that's responsible for doing the administrative work, like forwarding the payrolls over to the treasurer collector and the accountant's office, dealing with the town administrator's office in drafting the budget, making sure that all the accounts payable and the accounts receivable are recorded properly. That one person will then be able to supervise and properly assign with consultation to the administrator's office, the support staff, so we make sure we have coverage, not only at the area that the public come in, but to do everything we have to do in the various I've looked at various models across the state from, primarily from Worcester County East and South. There are all sorts of centralized models. Some have the inspection department with one centralized management. Some have inspection and, uh, planning, economic development, et cetera, in one department. It's a discussion that should be made among all of the stakeholders. But what we're looking at is right now, a system that doesn't work, so we'd like to put a system that does work in place. I've, uh, let's see where Nick is with these. All right. I'm looking at a change in organizational structure that will give a roadmap for decision-making. The authority lines are set and that's not to go against any of the authority lines that is statutory. The building inspector answers to the Board of Selectmen. The health agent answers to the Board of Health, we understand that. The planner or, uh, in some places, it's a community development director answers to the planning board. Conservation agent answers as far as all of the environmental stuff to the conservation commission. You can't disrupt those statutory lines, but you can make sure that administratively things work right. I'm looking at an org chart that somewhat looks like this. You have a director, and this is using your present personnel, you have a director, a planning assistant, the three clerical staff, and the inspector of Billings, conservation agent, sanitarian. And as you see, this part is the administrative part, this part's the planning part, these would be the independent inspectors, but would the scheduling of inspections, making sure that all of the inspections go through the software properly, get recorded properly, and are done in a timely manner, would be as a cooperative effort between the director and the inspectors, but the director would be ultimately responsible and answer to the Board of Selectmen if this was not happening because that is the ultimate authority in the town, is the Board of Selectmen. This shows that coverage would be the same as far as ours. It also shows that we would look to pay a town planner slash director a proper salary because you're going to need that to attract somebody. And I will discuss the duties that I think this position should perform next. And we're looking at a increase of about $12,000 on all the combined budgets. And I think for efficiency sake and for the fact of what I've seen, that a number of these projects have cost the town in legal fees to date, it's a good bargain. Because, and I'm not including the keating fees in any of this, I'm just including fees that we've seen that are used to rectify the problems or the fact that I think a professional in the position of town planner slash director would not need to call, an experienced person would not need to call town council as much as those phone calls have been made in the When you have a trained professional, you don't need to have KP Law on the speed dial. I've probably been going on a little bit too much if you, but that's my preface. Here would be a potential mission statement for the office. The director's duties, I'm looking as far as land use, most of these you should recognize because they're what a professional planner does, not only for the day-to-day operation of the planning and development offices, but also what would be done in zoning. Some of it is what I know is coming down the pike and going to hit both the town and the planning department and this board in the future. Also, this person should be involved in economic development grant writing because that's, to give you an anecdotal, my planner and director in a similar but not this exact form in Milbury, over the course of two years in grant writing, gained the town over five and a half million dollars in grants. And that's net. So you get someone who's professional, who knows what they're doing and knows where to go to get the grants, you can, uh, in effect, save a great deal of money that you will otherwise have to spend on consultants. CDBG projects and funding, it's almost nonexistent for this town. Community compact grants, other than your technology grants, you've done very little. Mass work grants, I don't think I've seen any that have in the files at all that you've, this town has applied for. You've got to update the master plan, you've got to draft an open space plan, you've got to draft a transportation plan, you've got to update your housing plan. I've received CPC money to do some of those, start some of that effort. I've got 40 hours on a serpent that is supposed to go to that effort. You're going to need all of those to go forward with any type of economic development assistance from the state, you're, any type of further open space, you really shouldn't be expending CPC money without a valid open space plan. But the fact that with, everybody's recovering, governmental units are recovering from COVID means that the state is not looking over everybody's shoulder like it has in the past. You have no growth management study that is valid. The serpent regional transportation plan, a cushion, it hasn't really contributed what they should to it as far as data and gotten what they need out of it. And your hazard mitigation plan is something that is adequate. You're under an MS4 permit, you might be under the nitrogen permit in the future. You're going to need a town planner and a conservation agent that work together to make sure you do not get any problems. In Milbury, when I arrived there, my MS4 costs were about $100,000 a year. When I left, because prior to me and my predecessor budgeting $100,000, the town had neglected to keep up with the number of their permits. When I left, the mandate from the state had increased to $400,000 a year. And you're not going to get out of that. I also think that if you have a director, you can segregate the review and approval of department payrolls, you can monitor all the budgets, approve requisitions and purchase orders. You can monitor all the budgets, approve requisitions and purchase orders, monitor the accounts payable and receivable, approve payroll, draft the budget, manage the programs, and consult with procurement, HR, and town council when appropriate, and have one person do that. And then your inspectors can go out and do what they're skilled to do, and that's inspect I think a director's qualification should be a bachelor's degree, a master's degree preferred, knowledge of the zoning laws in GIS, experience in grant writing and project management, three to five years' experience in municipal planning, hopefully a certification as a planner from AICP. You're not going to get that for $50,000. You won't even be get an assistant planner for $50,000 in the marketplace right now. That's the problem. I need a discussion with the various boards to see where you want to go and how we want to solve this problem. I can tell you one thing, from what I've seen in your files, if I was an attorney representing some of the applicants, I'd tear you apart and sue you for everything I could.
Well, Mr. Kelly has gone over quite a bit. This is the opportunity to ask questions. If you have any questions regarding his ideas to start.
And I would like to say, my door is open. Come and talk to me. Help with the ideas. Help us move forward and get out of this problem.
So I have a question for you. You kind of laid out to propose salaries, okay? Do we have the support staff, or we're going to have to add support staff besides what you've already laid out?
No. You can make it work.
With the current support staff that there is now, the clerical staff?
Your coverage would work. We're going to have to spend some money on technology as far as for the inspectors, or at least find out why the technology you have didn't, someone disabled the safeguards, or the safeguards were disabled, let's say. And make sure that all of the flow charts work. Because it's incremental how things are supposed to work. You guys approve something, then it goes to CONCON. They approve something, various inspections happen. Might go to the board of health. They approve, inspections happen. And then a building inspector issues a building permit. Well, that building permit shouldn't be issued until everything else has happened that should happen prior to. The technology should stop it.
You know, I mean, I understand what you're, what you're looking to do, Jamie. From, from my perspective, just to have a consistent, part-time planner that can deal with the rest of the boards on a daily basis, we haven't had that. I mean, and, and we have to look to, not to pass the buck here, but we have to look to the administration part to convince the, the money people, including the people at, on town meeting, that it is necessary to spend money to have somebody there, not just to coordinate things between the building department and the planning board, which honestly, they're, I mean, the planning board in this town is relatively quiet compared to many other towns. I mean, we haven't issued many special permits. Most of them have been related to solar arrays, which are kind of new thing for the whole town. We did, I, I mean, we've only done a couple of site plan reviews in the last 10 years. So, but to have the continuity of some kind of person that's a liaison between us and the day-to-day workings on the town hall, that's what I'm looking at is a minimum of crucialness.
You've got some major issues coming down the pike at you.
I, I understand that.
One of them is Church Street is going to, you're going to be an adjacent community. You're going to have to provide for all of the MBTA issues. But that's why I'm asking to look at this person not as just a planner per se, but as a department head who's also a grant writer and a finder of additional funding.
Yeah, you have no, I have no qualms about any of that at all. I mean, to have somebody available at a meeting that can give us some minor legal comment on what we're doing without having to go to town council, that would be marvelous. We have never had anybody like that employed here. Would love it. It would be marvelous. You know, it would, all of, all of this is going to be necessary. I don't think you get any pushback from the plan, from the planning board, certainly not from, from me. If, if I had the ability to utilize somebody for half of the stuff that's on here, that would be wonderful. That would be more than I've seen in 20 or 30 years.
And you're looking at a difference of $12,000.
It's a matter of convincing the finance committee, the selectmen, and the people at, at town meeting, because you're not going to, you're not going to get any, any pushback from this board.
Well, that's, that's my job. But I've got to.
Excuse me, excuse me. Can you please mute yourself? I'm not sure who's still on Zoom. We can't see. But whoever's on Zoom, could you please mute yourself?
Andy, you need to mute yourself.
Sorry, hold on.
No problem.
My apologies.
Mr. Chairman, I have no visual, but can I ask a question of the town administrator?
Please do.
If we're paying the, we have a full-time planner with a little 50s and a new job is 85, how do you, how do you come up with $12,000 a plus? I need to understand that.
It was 75.
Yeah. From 53 to 75 is $21,000.
See, he can't, he can't see this.
No. I've got a spreadsheet that shows how I take the monies of the four departments involved, fold them together, and then come out with one budget for, and it's a difference of $12,000 and change.
Okay, thank you.
I mean.
I'll, I'll, it's, is this, is this Mr. Divinian?
Yes, yes.
Yes, it is.
Okay. I can, I'm going to be MMA tomorrow, but if you want to email me, I'll send you the spreadsheet on Monday.
Yeah, that would be fantastic. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll reserve my comments until everybody else is done to talk to. Thank you.
Okay. I mean, my, my sense of it is, Jamie, that, I mean, the town is going to spend more than $12,000 just on the 550 Main Street issue in terms of time spent from all the different departments, legal counsel. I mean, we're not, we haven't even begun to put a lid on that project. To have somebody to avert even half of what's going to happen there is, is good money spent.
I have four other of your projects in my office now.
Yeah, well, we're going to discuss that. Any questions, comments, anything for Jamie while I'm here?
Really just trying to digest this.
Yeah, and I know this is a lot, and I'm coming to you guys first. I need input from you. I can shake and bake and design things. I can look at budgets, but it's your town. It's, you're, been chosen by the citizens to oversee this as well as CONCON, Board of Health, and I need your input to tell me which way to go to solve the problems.
Few more questions. Dave, I think you're up next. I think everybody here on the board is relatively finished with questions. What do you got?
Can you hear me good?
Yep, yep.
The sound coming from me to you is, from you to me is not that great.
No, we hear you perfectly.
Okay, thank you. Before I start, Jamie, I want to apologize for what I'm up to say because I'm going to throw rain on your parade. And I'm saying this not only as a, as a planning board member, I'm saying this as a taxpayer, I'm saying this as a, a civil engineer who works in 12 different adjacent towns and whatnot, and I have to share to the general public my knowledge of what I know, what you're asking for us to do as a town is to implement a position that I'm not aware of any other town locally has. I applaud you for looking at grants. Grants are important, and it's something that we're lacking. I agree with you. I think a lot, some of the problems are, majority of the problems that you described with our office, particularly, you know, files being incomplete, things being missing, that has to do with past problems with the planning board, in my opinion. And again, as somebody who, like before the planning board, and somebody who lives in town and actually watches the board meetings, our town planner, although I love Henry Young, fantastic person, was never ever here. We paid him as a part-time plant. He made in the 40s, forty-seven thousand dollars to be a part-time planner, but you could never ever go to that office and have a talk with a man unless, you know, you won the lottery and you knew he was going to be there that day. He showed up on the joint staff meetings on whatever day that happened, whatever it was, once a month or whatever. And then there, it was, it was far and wide, him being here in the town. I received a lot of complaints about that. I myself was flummoxed for not being able to communicate with the man face to face. So, you know, the problems with the planning board office started and ended with that. You know, when Doug took over, you know, we hired, you know, a kid out of college, basically. He made just huge strides, and he had such potential, and, and he knew what mess he was walking into, and he was starting to climb us out of the pit, if you will. And, and that's, that's a problem with the planning board. And, you know, as far as conservation, I'm going to say the same thing. You have somebody who was on top of the, you know, their game right now, and the past was not like that, things were overlooked. I just think that bringing somebody in here to talk, you know, to, to run every, every department and bring us all together, I just think that really comes down to, you know, getting competent people and working together and communicating together and not worrying about just your own little piece of pie and walking away and saying, well, I don't care what, what board health does or conservation does. It's giving everybody the courtesy of how a project works. I know this from experience. You know, I, I think what you described is an assistant town administrator or the building inspector's office. I mean, they really, the buck stops there. And everything, this, tonight, the meeting exemplified what needs to happen in this town where, you know, the building inspector will not move forward unless all the boards are, you know, in unison, in the same, same manner. And I think that, you know, we just need to work better together. I don't think, you know, as a taxpayer, hard for me to support. You say $12,000, I'm not buying that. I don't think we need a full-time planner. Part-time planner is all we need. You know, I'm going to give you examples of things I know. The town of Marion, you know, they function as a conservation commission without an agent, and they're a coastal community. You go into their agendas and you look at it, they have tons of stuff on there, tremendous volunteers, and they work without an agent. They finally got an agent, and they did a joint agent of the planning board and the conservation commission. I know that's rare, but you can find them. And they have one person serving dual roles that's full-time, that gets all the benefits, and they pay them good, okay? So that's one avenue that I would support, you know, or a part-time planner that is a part-time planner in another town. It doesn't have to be Rochester, Marion, Mattapoiset. It could be Easton, 30 minutes away. Maybe they live in between. That's something I would support, and that planner's position would cover all of what you said, writing grants. We don't have enough going on at our planning board to have a full-time position, and I don't think you need somebody to babysit all the other departments just to get somebody on track. I think this area has solid engineering groups, consultants that file applications. I do agree with you that there's some, you know, some things that went awry, you know, this, I don't think you can use this project as, as, you know, the staple of why we need to make a major change in this town and hire another. That 75 is not going to cut it. You're not going to find somebody for what you're describing, grant writing, you know, everything that you described. That's going to grow to a $100,000 position, and we're just a little town of 10,000 people, and we have too many of those positions as it is. You know, we don't have that much going on in this town. I understand what you're trying to solve, and I applaud you for it. And I, again, I apologize for throwing rain on your parade, but I, I just, I know too much to support something like that. I think that things could be fixed in a different way, particularly with communication and whatnot. I think I've probably said too much already, and again, I apologize, but I stand with it, and I know finding a part-time planner is almost impossible. I know that, you know? But I think we've got to keep searching until we find that fit for the town. Eventually, you will find somebody, maybe out of pure luck, I don't know, but we've got to reach technicals further and, and do what's right for this town. I just don't, I just, you know, my taxes, I have to tell you, Jamie, you know, all I hear from people about is taxes, right? We are the most, one of the highest taxed towns in the Southeast region. And I own two properties in town, and every year, one property stays the same, the other goes up 12%. You know, there's supposed to be something called two and a half, what is it, 2%, 2.5% override. You can't, I mean, I, you know, people tell me, how can I make taxes go up 15%? Well, they can. It's a balance, and I know the town needs to raise more revenue. I agree with you, we need to, we need to do more planning to get more projects in town and create more of a tax base. That's what we're really lacking, you know? And if we get a town planner that knows what he's doing, he will create ideas and bring them to the planning board, and that's what we need. We need to keep the taxes where they are for the next five years, give everybody a break, because I got to tell you, that's all I hear when I talk to people is the, you know, the escalating taxes. There's like no end to it, and there has to be. They can't, you can't just raise taxes every year, the same amount, over and over and over, and that's, that's where we're going with this, you know? So I'll, I'll shut up now and let other people speak. I think I've said all I had to say, so.
Dave, I, I'm not looking at it as raining on my parade. I'm looking at it as people, let's keep talking and try to figure out the solution. I will say, as far as taxes, for someone who this year, his tax bill went up 17%, I, I know what you're talking about, but that's not, taxes going up and Proposition Two and a Half are both fiction. It's not, they go up 2.5%. Your taxes go up because everybody wants to live here. Your taxes go up because everybody wants to live here, and property values are going up. They're going up exorbitantly. I mean, the other thing you hear, not only are taxes are going up all the time, but a lot of the people I know say, "And my children can't afford to live in the town they grew up in." Because so many people wanna live here, and the other problem is southeastern mass has been discovered, and you see all sorts of people coming in. But that's beyond the point. I wanted to begin the discussion. I would like this board to work with me to try to find a solution. I agree with you, it's almost impossible to find a part-time planner. Marion was lucky. Jay McGreal just left as town administrator. He's gone to Middleborough, but they were able to put a hybrid together. It's a good solution if you can find someone who's got the skill sets. I'd be glad to work that way. I just need all the various stakeholders to get together and tell me where you wanna go, because it's your town.
I don't know.
Well, I'm not asking for an answer tonight.
That's what I'm saying, there's actually a lot to digest.
Yep. I like... Dave, I agree with a lot of what you said. I agree with a lot of what you said. But I disagree regarding a part-time planner. I think we need somebody full-time, especially with everything. I mean, not just looking at what Doug did and what Henry Young did. We look at... We gotta look at what Doug did, and then you have to increase everything that's coming down the pike with the MTA and EPA and everything that's coming and looking for grant money. I don't think a part-timer is the solution. I think a full-timer would be the solution. You're not gonna get anybody worth anything for $50,000 nowadays. So, regardless of which way we go, whether it's a full-time planner or the director of community development, it's... We gotta pay them more, in my opinion. Taxes go up, yes, but I don't think, you know, that has... I don't know. We need somebody... And you're right, I agree that as long as the boards have communication, this person doesn't have to be the king of all departments. This person can be the regular town planner. And as long as we have communication throughout the boards, like we have had in the last couple of weeks, and I think, like you had mentioned, with the way the boards, with Andy Bobola, with conservation, with the new people that we have in the boards and the departments and the commissions now, I think that's something that can be done. And a lot of the problems that we have had can be fixed. I do think we need a full-time planner, and I think we need to pay him appropriately. Or else, we're gonna get what we had with Doug. We're gonna have somebody that comes in for 50 grand, they hang out for six months a year, and they get a little experience under their belt, they get some, you know, another checkmark on their resume, and then they're gone to go make more money. We need to... We need to pay somebody that's gonna wanna stick around. Again, his... What his job is and what his qualification, I mean, what he does could be determined later.
And this isn't just with you folks. I mean...
No, you described a whole lot of departments when you described this.
No, but I mean, I'm looking at... I've got a retiree as my finance director. I've got a retiree as my treasurer-collector. I've brought people in who know what they're doing to fix various issues.
But they're not gonna do it all.
No.
There's a lot of people like that. There's a lot of people that are looking at one of them. So, I don't wanna, you know, bring in somebody that, you know, is only gonna be around for a year or two and then was back in the same position. If we can, you know, pay appropriately and get somebody that's qualified that might wanna make a career out of this.
I mean, I'm lucky in the treasury and finance that the assistant is being mentored by these people.
And that's a great idea.
But I don't know how to do that with a planner.
No, I... No.
I just think you're already... Besides the planner we're adding, it sounds like we're trying to encompass more than just town planner by creating this community director.
Well, you're getting...
Is there a way to... It's... Let's wait for a second. Is there a way to ramp what you're trying to accomplish here? This sounded like... This is... You're acting like a major overhaul all at once, okay? Which is probably not... Which is gonna be... Which is gonna have its own issues within the town. So, we don't get people packing up and we end up with this mass exodus because we flipped it on its head, you know? We're having a tough... We have a tough time filling positions now, so I still think... I think this...
Remember, there's only three of us.
There's only three of us, and we need to have a town planner for more than a year and a half. That's what I'm saying. Three of us. That's it. Yep, so, you know...
And it's not just here. It's all the way across the Commonwealth.
That's what I'm getting at. So, the employment pool is...
Shrinking.
Yes. So, it's getting... Gonna get more difficult. And today is the first thing I said from... After listening to all of this, this is... That salary's gonna be... It's gonna require somebody with, you know...
You can get someone with that salary range. And you're not gonna keep them probably beyond five to seven years, just from my experience. But you'd get someone who is... This would be their first professional planner job after being an assistant planner maybe in a city.
You're asking somebody to be a planner slash manager slash director, so I think that's wrong.
The grant writing is the important part of it.
I understand that.
The management part is very simple.
Okay.
That is the simple part. It's just ensuring customer service and centralizing where the public comes in to talk.
I think that's a good idea. I think if we have a counter where everybody goes to, and this is what I'd like, and then the person behind the counter says, "Oh, okay, well, this is what you're gonna need. Reach up, grab a form, fill this form out." And then direct them to the next step. And then when they get done with that step, you go back to that same counter and say, "Okay, where do I go next? Okay, from now, you gotta go there." It's... Speaking from experience, when I did my project, I was lost. And if it wasn't for friends that were telling me, you know, "This is what you gotta do," then nobody tells you what to do because, like you said, they're silos. They're all separate individual departments. They're not coming to you. You gotta... Hey, you gotta go to them. So, I do like the fact of one person, or one counter. You go to Rochester, you walk in, there's one counter, and everybody's behind that counter. All the departments are behind that counter. I like that idea, whether it can happen here or not, I don't know, but...
And I will tell you that I'm... My view, from my background of prior to when I was an administrator, and I used to come in and investigate and prosecute and everything else like that, I liked to... And then I was on a special team in the state auditor's office. So, I like to put some assurances in place to make sure that things are done right, whether it's technology, process, beyond having just to trust in the good nature of humanity.
Yeah.
I mean, one of the things that you haven't touched on, that's a little near and dear to my heart, is one of the things that's driven staffing requirements up, or if it hasn't driven the staffing requirements up, has led to poor customer service, if you will, is the increase in regulatory requirements for everything, even just in the last five years. I mean, MS4. Now, we're looking at this nitrogen loading thing, you know, the... It's just increased exponentially over the last 10 years. And without trained staff to go along with that, the board's lost. I'll tell you that, right? All... I mean, you're obviously... I'm spiking to the choir here, but, I mean, you're looking at a part-time volunteer board here, basically. You know, and we can do simple things, we can do the ordinary things, but, you know, when it comes now to...
You need to tell a planner what they're doing.
It's a lot more difficult to judge all of the things that need to happen to make a project go today than it was 10 years ago. And there's a lot more to running the town today than there was 10 years ago. And without an increase in the money for competent staff, well, you're out of luck. It's just...
But you're not only out of luck without competent staff, you're not able to file the reports, et cetera, that you need to. It's kinda like filing your taxes. When you don't file that report that the state or the feds say you have to, they might not show up for 12 months, but 18 months later, they're showing up and they're saying, "Oh, you didn't do this on your MS4, or you didn't do this on something else." And we're from the government. We're here to help you. It's gonna cost you an extra 100 grand.
Well, this is good beginning conversation. I'm sure it'll continue.
I think it...
Mr. Chairman?
Would be part of the budget process.
Yeah. Yes, Dave?
I just would like to ask a question of town administrator.
Sure.
For clarification, are you telling the general public that... And maybe I misinterpreted. I just wanna understand. Would this person be responsible for updating our master plan and our open space plan? And I know that Doug mentioned, our prior agent, our prior town planner, he mentioned, like, I don't know, there were three plans, maybe four different ones that needed to be updated. Would that be something that that person would do? Or would we still farm that out at some astronomical cost that Doug was talking about for each of them? And he talked about consolidating them. I don't know if he talked about it at the meeting, but I know he talked about it internally to each of the planning board members, and it was just an astronomical number to update all our plans, which made us grant-eligible. Is that something that that person in that position would be responsible to do, which would save the taxpayers a bunch of money out of, you know, whatever, the general fund or wherever it comes from?
It was... The quick answer is yes. You're going to... That person would be the point person. There are some things you'd still have to farm out, but you wouldn't have to do the major consulting that you'd have to do. Looking at what you have right now, you'd have to... Internally, you could update a great deal of the data. Your master plan, you're going to have to have the public input. You're going to have to do the surveys. You're going to have to have the meetings. The open space plan, the same. Housing is fairly modern, so you wouldn't be able... You wouldn't have to do as much with that. Transportation plan is negligible. That's probably gonna be the biggest problem. And economic development plan grows out of it. But all of those things, other than the master plan, are separate plans that are incrementally part of a master plan. So, it's not like you're doing each plan separately. Everything you do for those increments builds towards the master plan. So, and I would expect that person, half of their time would be spent doing that. And as I said, I've got some money from CPC. I've got $50,000 that I got from the Commonwealth already to accomplish some of that as far as whatever the staff person couldn't do. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. I think that's very helpful information, especially bringing me on board, because I wanna understand, you know, I would hate to, you know, create more salary, and then we end up putting it out to bid for the exact same thing that we had with a part-time planner if I stuck around, you know? So, that helps to, you know, offset some of the costs that... Well, it helps pay for the job, right? I mean, that's a broad line.
Yeah.
That's what I... That's the kinda thing that I wanna... I wanna hear, I wanna see, you know, in documentation of some sort of support for your proposal.
Yeah. To put it in plain English, Dave, I am also a cheap son of a bitch. And so, if I can figure out a way to either get someone to do something in-house or get the Commonwealth to pay for it rather than the town, then I'll do that.
Okay, we're on the same field.
All right. So, that's why I was hired. I get it.
I heard you're a cheap son of a bitch, too.
Oh, man, my predecessors are talking about me.
Okay.
All right. Am I good?
You're good.
Yep.
This is the beginning of a lot of... A lot more discussion, but we'll get there. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, but however, there is... Is there a deadline before you gotta go to the board's selectman?
Mr. Chairman?
I've got to first...
One second.
I've gotta first put together a budget, but they told me I've gotta talk to you guys first.
Yeah. Yes, Andy?
Just a question through you, Mr. Chair and Mr. Kelly, if possible.
Sure.
One thing that I was thinking about, just very similar to what happens when we have a blizzard or, God forbid, a hurricane, FEMA gives us reimbursement. I'm thinking that judging from the astronomical amount of work involved by all of the departments, that perhaps we should be sitting down at a future date and putting together a list of reimbursements from now to some. And I'm just gonna put that bug in your ear, if you will, a little bit to think about.
I understand.
Why don't you come and bug me on Monday?
I already sent you an email.
Everybody have a good and safe weekend.
You as well.
Thank you.
You also.
Appreciate it. Okay, let's see. Let's see what's next on the agenda here. All right. Real quick, this is real quick, 'cause we've already been talking solar. There are four solar projects by the same company next to us. Cushing Lane, Robinson Road, 1050 Main Street... Cushing Lane, Robinson Road, 1050 Main Street and 1052 Main Street. Just to fill the board in, only one project, Cushing Lane, has a building permit. The others do not have a building permit. This is, these are four other projects that the department heads have been discussing and have been privy to some of these meetings as well. There's a lot that they still need to come up with. They're still negotiating the decommissioning bonds and the accelerator. They have now issues with conservation. A patent handed on one of their sites, possibly replication and whatnot that wasn't filed. Just to kind of update you that those four projects are, I'm going to say, on hold until they come back with more information. So those projects aren't going anywhere just yet. They need to also give us updated plans. They have made minor changes to those plans. We've requested that those minor changes be highlighted on the plan, so we don't have to go searching for them. So there's a lot of things going on behind the scenes with Nexant. I just wanted to update the board regarding those four projects that there's pretty much at a standstill right now until they come back.
That's what I thought, I seen that they all stopped.
Yeah, they all stopped. So just to kind of give you guys an update, just like Dave had mentioned, the boards are talking amongst themselves and having meetings regarding a lot of these things. So we've got to get away from these individual, as Jamie called it, these silos of individual departments that aren't talking to each other. It went on for a long time, excuse me. And now with new people, we're trying to get away from that and try to have more of open discussion. So just to kind of give you an update on that, David's kind of on pause for a little bit. Next, and Paul.
Yes.
We, Paul's been working very hard. I'm going to let him explain exactly what he's done, but there's a packet in front of each of you. And this is another thing to try to mainstream our department.
Yes. So, yeah, it hasn't really been hard work, it's just been a lot of work, a lot of data. So back when I was working with Doug, oh, maybe six, seven months ago, we were looking at updating and modernizing, making things more uniform, making things easier for residents and proponents and engineers to be able to come to a cushionet, find things easier, easier, to have forms that make sense, to have instructions for some of those forms, and to have flow charts for some of these things as well. So this booklet contains, and Dave, we'll have to get you a booklet here really shortly. Do you live over, you said you live over on Ansel White Drive?
Yes, sir, I'd rather not give the address number, but
Oh, no, no, no. I'm just saying, I can call you or email you and I can drop this off at your house because I'm over at my grandkids in that same neighborhood a lot. So I can drop one off like Monday.
That'd be great, thanks, Paul.
All right. So
And I applaud you for putting all of these forms online. It's great that the cushionet's actually moving closer to everybody else.
Yeah, we just didn't have the tools for people. Just, and example, the town clerk's office had this form they were using to charge fees with. And it was from 2010, 13 years ago. You know, handwritten notes all over and things, it was just kind of messy. Anyway, so the plan that we had to go through was we had to look at fees and update some fees. And we did a lot of work, Doug and I, and then later on, Pam and the town clerk's office, we looked at it with her to see where all the other abutting towns were charging for fees. So we've updated that. And also too, just to be aware, any changes to anything related to subdivision rules and regulations, revisions to fees, meeting schedules, things like that, have to be approved by the planning board first before they're instituted. So Doug kind of jumped the gun back the middle of last year. He put up a fee schedule and a meeting schedule with the twice-a-month meetings without getting the proper approval of the planning board, so.
In order to change the fees, do we have to formally have a meeting and change the subdivision rules and regulations at the registry of deeds?
No, no.
Okay.
The good thing about that is we can, as long as we've reviewed the fees and they seem fair to residents, and I have all the details of all the abutting towns, the city of New Bedford and everything, you guys can go through those. And I think it's probably best at the next meeting for us to go through some of these details.
Okay.
But I can assure you that we went through all of these details, Doug and I did, and also Pam and I had to, to make sure that they make sense for the town of Cushinget and for its residents and proponents and all of that. And then the other thing is the meeting schedule. So we currently have a meeting schedule that is twice a month. And we, if you did want to go to a once-a-month meeting, you would need to vote on that and approve that. So that's up for discussion as well. So in this packet, there's the current meeting schedule. And there's, I put together one that was, if you did want to change to a once-a-month meeting, I have that scheduled in that as well.
I'm going to interrupt you real quick.
Yes.
My two cents on the meetings, I know I told Paul to send out an email to kind of get your feel on whether you wanted to go back to a once-a-month or to stay on the twice-a-month. After thought and discussion about it, I think, in my opinion, it's better for us to stay with the twice-a-month meeting. And if nothing comes up, then we just cancel the meeting like we have been the last couple of weeks, if nothing's been coming up. In my opinion, it's easier to have a meeting on the books and cancel it if not needed than it is to put it in the books and try to get a meeting set up. If it's in for a full year, we can all put it in our calendars and we already could, you know, look ahead and say, okay, you know, got a meeting, can't do this, got a meeting, got to be there. If we just start creating meetings because it's necessary, I think it's a little bit more difficult. So in my opinion, this plan has been put out for every two weeks. I would suggest keeping it, that's my opinion. It's easier to delete a meeting than it is to have.
Okay, can I just add to it, I agree with two meetings a month. However, you know, the album was thinking that we designate definitely one meeting. This is our meeting date, you know, and the second meeting being optional or as needed. You know, I don't know quite how to word that, but if there's actually work, but we should have a structured, one of those meetings should be a structured meeting date. You know, first Thursday of the month, whatever it may be, to address any issues. This is just my thought. And if anything does arise, obviously, we're going to be at the second meeting. If not, again, like you said, you can cancel it. But I just think for the public that we know that we have at least one. They can look at it and say, okay, we get this one particular, this is their main meeting of the month.
So you're almost saying, let's get the structural one done in one meeting. And the other meeting is for things that'll arise.
Yeah, it might be public hearing, it might be something a little different, it might be, or whatever it may be.
But any of those things could happen at
Just a thought, just sort of.
Anytime, you know? So I think leaving the schedule for twice a month and you have the ability to cancel them. So it's a lot easier to say something, okay, on Friday afternoon after a 12-month deadline, we got nothing on the agenda, I send an email Monday, Tuesday, cancel the meeting this week because there's nothing for the agenda.
Right. I think, well, let's
With the deadline, it's easier to do that. You know, if you've got a Friday deadline, I think it's easy enough to do it that way. That gives everybody here, you know, several days to
To cancel, you say?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And
And you're right, in that case, to now try to add a meeting and you're going to try to get in touch with everybody and, you know, you've already made plans.
Yeah.
I understand.
Dave, go ahead.
I agree with everybody, everything everybody said. I hear what Steve's saying, and I think what Rick said makes sense. You know, we have on the calendar cutoff of submittals, right, Paul? I haven't seen it because I'm not there, but as long as we have a submittal cutoff for that meeting, then it will take care of itself, from my experience, being on the other side of the fence.
Yeah.
I think it's important to keep both meetings in place, like the chairman said, because particularly A in our plans, if somebody goes to the town clerk and they file it, then we have to act within 20, you know, 21 days, or whatever it is, 20, 21 days, let's get the number. But then, you know, we have to have that next meeting if they file it at a certain timeframe, you know, within the clock. So it's so much easier just to have the meetings, the whole calendar's set for the whole year. Then consultants or applicants or property owners, they know, oh, can we make that meeting? So they're consulting, like, yep, as long as you make that deadline that's on the website, then, you know, we should be trying to attempt to meet, you know, at least three of us to address that A in our plan, if that's what they have in front of us. Because if we don't, then we have a special meeting before that time clock runs out. So it really is important to just have the schedule the way it is and just cancel it out. We've got nothing scheduled, nothing filed, just, you know, chit chat about whatever, like tonight's more of an open discussion, then we, you know, we can carry that to the next meeting. It's so much easier to lay out the calendar for the whole year than just, you know, just cross the miles if we need to. So that's my take on it, thank you.
Continue, Paul.
Okay. So one of the goals here for these things like form instructions and forms and flow charts is eventually to get this up on the town's website to have anybody from a resident to a proponent, to an engineer, to be able to go in and look at this stuff and have them up there as a fillable PDF product that they can easily work with. So that's the goal for this eventual stuff. And then, so the first section is fees, the second is meeting schedules, and then there's all the forms. All the forms that were done, and that's from Form A1 all the way to Form O, those revisions included a rewrite for uniformity with no changes to content. So, and also we've added revision dates that none of the documents never had. So that was the proper thing to do as well, we thought. And we also have some form instructions specifically for Form A1, Form B, and Form C. So somebody can come in and look at that and then go to the A1 form and fill it out. Really simple. And other things too, that we've been, Jamie was working with Doug on, if you look in the LAX section, process flow charts, we developed what's called the Town of Cushinget Property Development Process. And it's a two-page document that it's going to take some time for you guys to look at and absorb the details. But it really kind of makes sense. And the other one, there's also a flow chart for the Form A, approval not required. It gives all, an applicant, an easy looksee on one page of how to do that. And we also developed a flow chart for the solar special permit flow. And one of the big reasons why we did that was because we found out, as we were going through documents, or the assessors' office found out, that there was data that wasn't correct on special permits and what was recorded at the registry of deeds. So I had to make like seven or eight corrections to various special permits, send that on over to the town clerk and the assessors' office to get those corrected. So now they're going to be in the loop like they should have been all this time. So it's kind of a lot of data, but again, on the forms themselves, the part of this book is, all that was changed was the uniformity of it, they all look the same now. They all have revision dates on them, so. And then at our next meeting, after Dave gets his book, at the next meeting, when we have it, we can talk about the details of the fee schedule and how they were arrived at.
And then we vote whether we want
And then you can say, okay, yeah, yes. And then the planning board just has to make a motion to accept these new documents.
Okay. I personally think it's a huge step forward. All the updated forms, just to be able to go online and be able to, you know, PDF and print it. That's huge. But again, like I was telling Jamie, a flow chart as simple as this, to tell the average Joe, step one, step two, step three, is huge.
And there's a separate form instruction sheet for Form A as well.
Right.
Form A, Form B, and Form C, so.
Yeah, it's just, I think, I think this is really good, it's a really great step towards modern times.
Yeah, modernizing.
Modernizing what should have been done a long time ago. So I think it's great. You guys all have a book, take some time, look it over, read it. Any questions, you can reach out. Paul's the creator of this, he can answer any questions. And then at our next meeting, we can, again, continue the discussion and then, you know, finalize and go vote if we want to adopt it. Sound good? All right, well, let's keep this meeting somewhat moving and the current town plan, nothing, long-range plan, nothing, old business, nothing. Is there anything else anybody would like to discuss?
Just a quick question while Mr. Kelly's here. Obviously, we don't have a current town planner. I know town meeting's coming up and we're going to be needing to develop a place for the town meeting, am I correct? For the department and how do we need to be involved in that?
Say that again.
The town meeting's going to be coming up in May or whenever it's going to be coming up. It's getting to be budget season, this stuff's got to go in front of the finance committee, blah, blah, blah. We don't have a current town planner to do this, so I just wondering how that budget process is going to go.
I'll do the budget.
The planning. Okay. Thank you, just, all right, that's
Most departments were told, I want three budgets, level funded, 1% increase on non-mandated costs, and a 5% cut on non-mandated costs. And then the town administrator will put his recommendations together, send them to the board of selectmen, and it's the board of selectmen's budget.
Who do I brought up? Because you had mentioned about, and I definitely, out of all the stuff I agreed to, it was about the software updating, and that all comes with cost. So I just always wanted to know how that gets accomplished. Thank you.
If there is nothing else, gentlemen, can I give
I just have one thing.
Sure.
And this is relative to having a town planner on staff at some degree. I mean, I got to thank you, Mark, for spending time out of this meeting to help move along some of these pressing issues that we have. I don't think the general public realizes how much time there is involved in just coordinating the efforts with the rest of town personnel. It's just a thank you, that's all. It's just a thank you. That's all. That's all of this. And the same plug to Jamie, that's, I mean, we just, we haven't had a consistent town planner for the last ten years. And that's one of the reasons the things are in the state that they are. And, you know...
Yeah, yeah. I agree.
Yeah.
Flying by the seat of your pants, that's...
Yeah, I mean, you can do, you can only do so much with volunteer unpaid help.
Yeah, and I feel that definitely needs to change.
It really does. I mean, the, you know, and the planning board's been relatively, I'll call it, lucky to not be in the middle of legal battles between us and project proponents because the costs of the town will far exceed any cost of providing a full-time planner.
Agreed.
You know, the unfortunate part is it's hidden costs. You can't point to a sheet before the fact and say, you know, it's gonna cost us an extra $250,000 in legal battles because we don't have a town planner in place. It would be wonderful if we could do that, but we cannot. It's, and to always be dealing with those kinds of issues after the fact is expensive as the town has found out with PJ Keating.
Yeah.
I mean, I...
Agreed, agreed.
Oh, okay. In my opinion, I think that's why Jamie's plan makes utter sense.
I just, we're still in discussion, but I mean, that's, my two cents is that because of the dollars involved, especially when in the solar arrays, I mean, we haven't had much for subdivision applications. We've had almost nothing for Form As. I mean, most of, and to be quite honest with you, the project for the convenience store, that was really the first project of any size that the planning board did a site plan review on. I mean, there was one ten years or more than ten years ago for the small retail operation down off of Main Street and back at Dunkin' Donuts, to the side of Dunkin' Donuts and to the back. We just haven't had the activity. The solar arrays is a phenomenal amount of activity all of a sudden that we were not equipped to handle.
Right.
I mean, quite a lot of it.
And you don't want to have a 40-yard come down the pipe.
There's, yeah, I mean, without getting into specifics, yes. I mean, the regulatory climate has changed. It's much more complicated to deal with, and it's much more expensive to deal with also. I mean, I won't even get into the thing with the nitrate loadings and...
Yeah, that's a whole other conversation.
No, I would like to see, there'd be, I hate to say another state operation, but, you know, when they pass federal regulations, before it can move forward, the Office of Management and Budget has to review what the cost of implementing those regulations is going to be. And it would be wonderful if the regulatory agencies in the state of Massachusetts were subject to the same type of review.
You've already made the...
I think that this whole thing with the nitrate loadings would be, have been approached very differently if something like that were in place.
Okay.
I just, two cents, sorry.
Sorry to interrupt. Dave, if you're still out there, you good?
A motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.